Right, 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 yes. Unfortunately, I had a phone meeting that I had to take, so I was not able to be there for this. Like, I gave some...
Yeah, I mean, it's just like, and it'll make your body.
So they, can you think of a topic?
Hi, good to see you. So, yeah.
Oh, I think I know where it is. You know? Hey, Kathy, another person nearby, I will never think of them.
Mrs. Pete, could you please bring us back from closed session? Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, we can go anytime.
Mrs. Pete, could you please call us back from closed session?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council has reconvened from closed session during which it discussed the following matters. Item number one is conference on pending and potential litigation under Government Code Section 5496.9, 56.9, sub D sub 1 and D sub 4. And the council discussed the matter, provided direction to staff on settlement parameters, both globally and also specific to select electric and DODI. The council did not discuss the SDGNE delay claims. And that concludes the closed session report on that matter. No further reportable action taken. On item number two, potential litigation under Government Code Section 54956.9, sub D sub 4. City Council discussed the matter, the status of the matter in moving forward with previously authorized litigation, and no further reportable action on that matter. On item number three, conference with legal counsel on potential litigation under Government Code Section 54956.9, sub E, sub 3. Potential claim, one potential action from claimant F. Moran. The council discussed the matter, provided direction to staff regarding the denial of the claim, and no further reportable action was taken. That concludes the closed session report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Pete. With that, the special meeting is adjourned, and we will go right into our new regular city council meeting, July 22nd. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and could you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I have an invocation this evening. God, we ask your blessings on those who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Guide us to peacefully debate. Remind us that we are not only leaders, but also servants, and servants above all else, and that it's our responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know what to do is good and right. May we speak when it's time to speak and listen always. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love when we're serving our community that we love so much, the city of San Marcos. Amen.
Okay, could we please have a roll call, Mr. Skalik?
Could you name Councilmember LeBlanc?
Present.
Councilmember Musgrove?
Here.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Sannella?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here.
Okay, next up, we have proclamations and presentations. We're going to go out of order. We're going to have our emergency preparedness certificate real quick. That way, we can listen to the wonderful presentation that we are going to have from North County EDC. Okay, if the council could join me at once? So today, who do we have coming down to? Oh, there she is. Come on down. So the San Marcos City Council recognizes National Preparedness Month, whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA has designated September as National Preparedness Month, emphasizing the critical importance of proactive planning to safeguard communities against natural and human-made disasters, and whereas the state of California continues to face significant threats from severe winter storms, major earthquakes, and catastrophic wildfires, such as the 6,245 wildfires that have burned more than 925,000 acres statewide in the first eight months of 2025, demonstrating the urgent need for effective preparedness measures. Whereas, the city of San Marcos leads in resilience building through major mitigation projects, including the upcoming construction of Fire Station Number 5 and the completion of the San Marcos Creek Project, which enhances flood protection and safeguards infrastructure. And the San Marcos Fire Department conducts over 3,200 wildfire mitigation inspections annually and ensures the city fire hydrants are 100% operational, maintaining the community's readiness for our emergency response. Through collaborative efforts, San Marcos has introduced a helipod firefighting water source to support wildfire suppression and encourages residents to download, and I knew that's what you're going to talk about, Jamie. She is wonderful, getting us online and hooked up on all of that. And we encourage our residents to download the Emergency Alert Apps and prepare to be self-sufficient for at least 72 hours in the event of a disaster. We, the City Council of the City of San Marcos, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Preparedness Month in the city of San Marcos and call upon all of our residents to make sure that you are prepared, you have a go-bag, although we don't want you to have to use one, but we want you to be prepared with one. Anyway, Jamie, do you have a few words for us?
I do, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
So upon looking, our registration for Alert San Diego has actually gone up by a couple of thousand, actually over 4,000 registrations. We want to even boost that number higher. So what I'd like to ask everybody to do is to go to alertsandiego.org and register yourself, your family members, if you would like alerts for them, and your small businesses, to get alerts whenever there are impacts to those addresses. I'd also like to highlight the Genesis Protect app. This is the QR code, you can actually download it right now. Please tell your friends, neighbors, and family members about this app. This is where you can find vetted, real-time evacuation information during disasters. We are announcing this, being pretty prepared, a couple of months early, in effort to encourage our residents to have personal preparedness. We are throwing an event on September 13th, and at that event, we will have over 25 vendors through the community that will encourage families to prepare for their personal preparedness, their homes, defensible space. And there will be both English and Spanish representatives for every vendor. So please make sure to check out our social media, both for the Fire Department and the city, on updates, on times, and the specific vendors that are coming to help you prepare for fire season. Thanks.
One more thing, do we still have our fire open house the first Saturday of October?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
No, that's definitely happening.
Do you know the date of that?
I don't, but it's always the first week, yeah, it's always.
Perfect, all right. Well, we encourage everyone to attend that as well, and thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Really appreciate you.
Absolutely.
And I'll give you this.
Great.
And then we will. And I did want to remind everyone to make sure that you set your alerts on your phone, because if there is a fire in our community or nearby, it tells you, it alerts you that it's happening. So if you have family members, you can also find out from that too, so you can help protect them. And make sure everyone is definitely, has that app downloaded. Okay, moving on to economic indicator report. We have Eric Bruvold with us this evening. Oh, there you are, you're already jumping up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and you've got a PowerPoint?
I do, I do.
North County Dow News Outlet Workforce.
Yeah, you know what, and I have, I can't take any credit for that. That is Caitlin Camby, who is our great COO, who is, you know, kind of becoming a master of acronyms. So one of the things that we wanted to do was give stakeholders more than just a once-a-year update like we do at the summit in May where many of you were, and really start to produce for you on a quarterly basis the data that we're seeing about the economy to help you be better North County stewards for both your city and the region. And so we're doing this and releasing this every quarter. You should be getting it, your economic development managers are, and we send it out to other people, and so they can forward it on to you. And so, again, the presentation goes through a few things, and then I'll just highlight some of the key factors. This is a lot of words on a slide, but I think the bottom line is, is what we've seen over the last six to nine months in the economy is a slowing. And I want to go into some of the underlying conditions there, where are some of the challenges that we're seeing in North County, and then how is the city both you can further prepare, and then where you have some good advantages as we look out on the horizon. So again, as we sort of look at this North County region, that's everything north of 56. A couple slides are San Marcos-specific, but I think it's important to look at the region. As I've been here before, and as you know, many of your residents leave to take jobs in other North County cities, and many North County residents that live in other cities come in to work in San Marcos businesses. We really are a region, and we operate that way, both in terms of daily living and then our economy. We've lost 3,800 manufacturing jobs, and it is important to see then, when we disaggregate, how we're sort of, I would say masking, or how when we disaggregate, we see some of the concerns that are there in the economy. There are some strengths for San Marcos, which I'll get to in a minute. Residential sales have ticked up in the spring, they took a little dip in May from what we see in the data. But again, that's really reflective of elevated mortgage rates, and we're seeing that reflected in new home permits throughout North County as we look at 2025 and compare year over. Taxable per capita sales have also been down. If we look at quarter 1, 2024 versus 2025, now, again, there's some, you know, some people pay early, or partials, or double payments, and so it's important to look at that trend over time. And then again, that's taxable sales, not what you're collecting. So it's a little difference in the finances. We measure that on a per capita basis, and we've seen that it's down in six out of nine cities. And then again, as I said, kind of an economy which is paused. This shows you where we are in terms of unemployment and changes since December 2024. So you, kind of a six-month overview, again, no change in San Marcos's unemployment rate, but in the county, we've seen a little bit of softening. And then again, in the United States, California's ticked up, the United States has ticked up since the, a year-over data. Employed counties and workers in San Diego, North County, that's the good news. We've actually seen an increase in the number of employed workers, but some of the reflection in our unemployment rate is more people coming into the labor force. So we're increasing labor participation, people are active. And if you've looked at it, one of the things that we've sort of seen is that we've got kind of this weird job market where things are, and people aren't laying off for the most part. I'll show you the layoff numbers, which in North County actually look really good for the first six months of the year. But hiring has been a challenge, and so you've got a lot of job seekers who are having challenges finding positions, but at least those people that have jobs have staying employed. This shows you that disaggregated number, and I think that's really the important thing, is to look, that we've seen job losses in construction and manufacturing. But then again, a place for San Marcos where there's real health, and I'll show you that in terms of job posters, posting is in this Eds and Meds sector, education and healthcare, which has seen significant growth over the last 12 months. And that's sort of interesting, when we look at overall, we've got kind of this, you know, seemingly, you know, a decent job market, but when we unpack sectors, we're seeing concern in terms of both our manufacturing and information technology sectors, and those are sectors that bring new dollars into the region and help really fuel long-term prosperity. This shows you again percentage change, that same data, and shows you the number of people that work in those individual clusters, and then annual percentage change if we look at the last five years. And you see there that biotechnology over the last five years is actually mostly because of changes in 2024, is taking a dip, and then where the rest of it, and then again, happy to talk about. But again, healthcare, big sector in terms of employment, and we've seen continued growth there. Layoff notices, sorry for the small font size, but this is that we've only had four companies in North County file warrant notices since April of 2025, when the new data kicks in. And that's actually probably a good sign. Again, it's this interesting labor market where it's hard for people right now who are trying to find work, but people aren't getting laid off. Companies are really very much in a, in a kind of a wait-and-see mode. This, I think, is actually kind of an interesting chart, and again, shows this. The gray line is 2023 to 2024, the blue line continues that on. So you've got, you kind of, kind of account for seasonality. And you've seen sort of since the beginning of the year, we had kind of an uptick in hiring activity, or at least job posting activity, but then a decline through the months of May and June. This shows you a San Marcos-specific data and tells you who's out there hiring. Where's really the companies that are trying to find talent? And again, you see top of the list is your new Kaiser Hospital. They are trying to fill positions. Lots of those are in registered nursing, but there's other positions which they're hiring. They're for True Care, North County Health Services, kind of a combination. It's wow the data point picks that up from True Care's old name. Then the Gary and Mary West Pace, and you can see the others that are hiring for folks in terms of those areas. So lots of healthcare activity in terms of San Marcos. And that shows you the median time, that kind of is how quick they get to fill that position, and then the number of active jobs that they've got advertising. This shows you that home sale data, just kind of compares San Marcos, just under $1 million for median home price in terms of Zillow, and where that trend has been year over year. You see that we saw some activity in terms of the residential market, and then we've seen some decline in May and June. That has implications, even though you get a very small share, I think the smallest of the county for property tax, those home sales are important because they reassess the value of residential property, which flows down to property tax collected at the county level, that then flows down to the city for their distribution. So that has been declining because of high interest rates. A number that I heard, which I think is really telling, and I think is again, one of those reasons why the council for adding new housing inventory is so important to the region, is that the data that I saw is that 60% of people have a mortgage that's under 3%. And so when they're looking right now to sell and then take on 6% or 6.5% money, or stay where they are even if they don't necessarily like it at 3%, that's why you've seen some freezing in the housing market. And something which is going to be a long time working through, because I don't think anybody expects, at least within the next 12 to 24 months, that we're going to get back to 3% interest on home mortgages. This then gives you some data points, and I just would highlight the last two lines there, again, reflecting that higher interest rates and where the federal funds rate has been for this year, which is that building permits are down year over year about 208, so, you know, about 20%. And then year-to-date, we're down 385 compared to where we were last year. So again, that's having an impact, and those are county-wide numbers, the impact of more expensive money and the challenges with mortgage interest rates. So again, I would say that the conclusion, this is some things that we're going to be adding to the report. We're going to be creating a North County Stock Index. We'll be updating you on largest lease signings and building sales, some information about venture capital, and a couple other things that are going to go on in our next iteration of North County now. But I think for you and San Marcos, I think I would offer really a couple of suggestions. I know this is not surprising to test. One, you're well-positioned in terms of healthcare, but there are some concerns. Federal law and changes have, are going to have impacts on both higher education and on healthcare as we move forward, especially some of the cuts. Now, those don't happen right immediately, but some of the cuts that'll be occurring with Medicare could have implications to your healthcare providers. Higher education's concerns are hitting sooner. We had an okay budget for higher ed and CSU this, this kind of last year, what the governor just passed in June. But some of those funds have been delayed, and there's some expectation whether or not Sacramento's going to make that up. And because of the importance of that sector in San Marcos, that's something to keep your eye on. And then secondly is this loss of manufacturing jobs that continues. And San Marcos has traditionally had a strong, robust manufacturing sector, particularly up over the hill in the business park in the La Costa Meadows area. But continuing to work on that active outreach, solving problems for those companies remains important. Again, partly to help them swim against some of the challenges that they're facing at the state and at the national level. So that's our indicators report. Happy to be back next quarter if you want to. I don't think it'll be bad news, this isn't bad news, but it's just saying, you know, this is where the economy is today, and it's kind of in a, in a treading water period of time. Happy to answer any questions.
What's that nautical term, it sounds like the doldrums, perhaps?
What?
The doldrums, waiting for the wind to pick up?
I think that's right. I mean, I think that right now, what we've seen for literally the six months, and I think you, he goes sector by sector, is there's just been uncertainty in the environment which people are operating in. And I think that's why you've seen people not lay off folks, because the macroeconomic conditions aren't horrible, but they haven't really picked up hiring because they just don't have a lot of certainty as they look forward.
Eric, thanks for the presentation, and I'm looking forward to having the quarterly reports. Very, it's useful and it's valuable information for our community. I am very excited about the North County Stock Index and can't wait to, is that next quarter?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, yeah, Mike, and as you probably know, it's, there's a little bit of challenge of putting all that together. But what we're going to do is we're going to focus on North County publicly traded companies, and then parent companies for North County companies that have a significant presence. We're trying to figure out the best and most informative way to weight that, and to try and think about whether market cap's really the right way, or do some fancy math with logarithms, which is like, you know, kind of what I want to do, to try and smooth out that. So we don't have like somebody like Sempra just dominating the stock index compared to some of our small-cap stocks. But that's our expectation, to try and roll that out next quarter.
Fascinated, I can't wait.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for all you do. Any other discussion? Yes, Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Eric. This is a great presentation. I'm, I'm wondering about the manufacturing or the change. Is it too early for you to tell what's going on there? Are we going to see a shift? Is, are all our manufacturing leaving North County? Where do you, what do you think is going on there?
So I think there are a couple of important trends that are going on. One, I think this is just, has been a very long historical trend, which isn't manufacturing companies leaving. It's manufacturing companies being able to do more with less people. It is the story about automation and really manufacturing processes that have created a productivity boom. And if we look over the last, say, 20 years, that's clear in the manufacturing sector. But what has been, I think, the case over the last 12 months in San Diego County and North County in particular, has been two factors. One, I think we just cannot discount, and I'm not going to get political tonight, but we cannot discount the importance to North County manufacturers for the uncertainty around tariffs. That has been significantly a challenge, not because of necessarily the tariff level, but because of the uncertainty over tariffs and what they're going to do. And we could just go through all of your major manufacturers in North County, from Hunter to Watkins Wellness, to Thermo Fisher, to Genentech, to, from Hobycats. I mean, those are your largest private sector employers who are manufacturers in North County. All of them have significant overseas factory presences, and all of them are moving, in many cases, goods multiple times across the United States-Mexican border daily as they do their operations. Uncertainty over tariffs made it challenging for those companies to further expand and to move forward. And then I think, secondly, you know, another important trend for San Diego has been shifts in our defense industry. So we have seen shifts in what the Department of Defense is procuring, which didn't necessarily work to San Diego writ large and North County writ large's advantage. These are more sort of individual discussions, but I think, you know, if you, is that the DOD is really trying to rethink how it defends ourselves in the 21st century, and there's been some shifts in San Diego's defense industry because of that.
All right then, thank you so much.
Sorry, Mayor, so then that brings then a follow-up question, since you mentioned defense. So with this large number, right, that has been approved and that shift, are we going to see those funds coming here, back to San Diego?
So I think it's, I think actually, in some senses, it's too early to tell, right? So what will happen next is that there'll be a lot of decisions in terms of procurement. Now, writ large, the San Diego region, especially in sort of the southern part of North County, so our efforts around Rancho Bernardo and Poway, and the work that's being done on droned and unmanned aerial aircraft, that is really good for North County. But there has been some scale-back in terms of communications and the communication equipment, the stuff for C4I, which is used by soldiers on the battlefield, kind of as, kind of like, you know, pick up the radio kind of stuff. And we've seen some cutbacks or some slowdown in expenditures in DOD, and that, I think, has been some of the impacts that you've seen in the procurement area.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, thank you, we appreciate it. All right, moving on to the consent calendar, are there any items that any councilmembers wish to poll? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second?
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any noes? Seeing none. Okay, moving on to our item, oh, oral communications. We have two speakers. First is Grace Spivak with Universidad Popular, followed by Ray Trigambo, Trigamimbo, Membo, sorry. Hi, Grace, how are you?
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. For the record, my name is Grace Spivak, and I'm here on behalf of Universidad Popular to provide our on-the-record updates. First, I am really excited to share an upcoming event with you all. We are hosting a community education event in partnership with Listos, which is the statewide network of community-based organizations who are boosting resiliency, providing accessible in-language information about surrounding disaster and emergency preparedness. And it kind of goes hand-in-hand with the proclamation from earlier about Disaster Preparedness Month. So we're having this event on August 8th. We're going to be helping our community members of all ages better understand how we can be prepared for all types of disasters. And, yeah, we want to really promote being there for each other, and it's essential during times of crisis to be there to protect our neighbors and have the educational materials that we need beforehand. So an important part of this event as well will be distributing essential food and pantry items to our families and community members. So we have been asking around for donations of non-perishable goods, fresh produce, and other staples. We're collaborating with a few different organizations, so we're really excited about that. And then we also want to thank our San Marcos Community Action Group, Sharon Jenkins, and the City of San Marcos staff for their continual support of our food pantry that we have daily, and then for their support for this event as well. Next up, we're proud to support the San Marcos Fire Department's Emergency Preparedness Fair that was mentioned, coming up on Saturday, September 13th. We have a strong track record as an organization of being a frontline responder during emergencies, and so we're honored to continue contributing to local preparedness and resilience efforts. The app that was mentioned, the Genesis Protect, we've been promoting that app for a while now. now, and our, our community members do find it to be really helpful. It has some really neat features on it that we've been able to kind of show and just educate people on how it works, so it's been really neat. And we're also looking forward to reconnecting with CERT as well and having another cohort of our students become CERT trained. Lastly, an update on the programs and classes that we offer. Our San Marcos Citizenship classes have a new location for the summer. We are renting the space right over here in the San Marcos Community Room, so we're there every Tuesday from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and we're always seeking volunteer tutors to help our students practice for their exam in English or in Spanish. Your support can truly make a meaningful difference in their journey to citizenship. And we're deeply grateful for our partnerships with the City of San Marcos, whose collaboration makes our mission as an organization of empowering the community through civic engagement possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. I did have one quick question.
Yes.
August 8th for that, that you said that you'll be also having a food pantry event as well at that. How would we find out what it is that you need? Do you have a needs list somewhere?
Yes, we do. I also have a flyer, so it has my phone number on the bottom that you can call for more information. We have a Google form that's where we're kind of hosting our, collecting our like donation details. So definitely, we have a list on there as well of our needs.
Can you put a few up with our city clerk?
Yes, I will share them. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, next up is Ray Trigambo. Oh, I'm sorry. Help me out here.
You were right the first time.
I was right the first time?
Very first time.
So it's Trigambo?
Trigambo.
Trigambo. Got it.
When I was in junior high, I was chicken gumbo, so.
Oh, well, I won't, I won't say that. Thank you so much.
Well, good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Ray Trigambo. My subject is e-bike safety. Last August, I contacted my councilman, Ed Musgrove, about my concerns, and he immediately connected me with Janel Loughlin, who provided information on the city's efforts with the Sheriff's Department and the school district in creating an excellent educational e-bike program. Last week, I received an update of the city's e-bike progress, which includes more education, increased permitting efforts, and revised bike and e-bike regulations. I commend the city on these actions. At the same time, e-bike activities continue to grow exponentially, as do the concerns they have created, potential harm to citizens and potential harm to e-bike riders. The unaddressed problem, in my opinion, is enforcement. In the small area in and around Woodland Park, from El Norte to Mission, local citizens regularly experience groups of middle school age e-bikers, usually in three to eight bikes, racing through the park, on sidewalks, and throughout the grass and the tree areas, around and sometimes through parents with small children, strollers, and pets, senior citizens, senior citizens with canes and walkers, senior citizens with pets. I personally have had three near misses, but it's not about a 74-year-old guy with an 11-pound dog. It's more than that. And let me add to that. Regularly driving in traffic lanes, not bike lanes, often weaving across lanes, doing wheelies and other tricks while the traffic behind them breaks to avoid creating an accident. Author T.S. Eliot wrote, "Good writers borrow and great writers steal." The City of Carlsbad has recently added to its municipal code comprehensive new rules for e-bikes, enforceable by fines. I suggest and hope that our city council borrow or steal Carlsbad's new e-bike rules, review them, amend them, add to them, put them on our municipal code, in your form, our municipal code, as quickly as possible to increase the safety for e-bike drivers, other drivers who interact with e-bikers, and our city's pedestrians who are at the mercy of these silent vehicles currently driving on the sidewalks.
Sorry, Ray, sorry, sorry, your, your time's up. I, I did want, sorry, not, not to cut you off, but we have to be fair to everyone, have the same amount of time. I did want you to know that we take this very seriously. We are looking into a few things, and we are going to be launching a Safe San Marcos campaign that is, requires all of us to help with this because it's not just the city, it's not just the school district, it's not just the Sheriff's Department. We also need the parents to also work with their kids and get their kids to follow the rules because we can't be everywhere to enforce every moment of the day. Part of that is going to require our parents to be very involved with this as well. But point well taken. I myself have experienced some of this. I know we all have, honestly, but anyway, thank you very much for your, your feedback.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And Ray, if I can just add too, if you haven't already reached out to your state representatives, I really think the, the solution to this issue, and I agree with everything you just said, is a more comprehensive statewide set of laws that govern e-bikes. And we're not getting that out of Sacramento right now because it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for Carlsbad to have one set of rules or laws, San Marcos have their own set of rules and laws, and Chula Vista, and we need a statewide governance around this issue.
Because they fall within the, the actual vehicle code.
Exactly. So please, if you haven't contacted your state representatives, take it to them too. Keep coming to us, but, but let's fight it from multiple angles.
I'll follow up with that and I'll continue to not speak at every meeting, but.
No, it's okay. We hear you.
I will email information your way when I have new information.
Sure, of course. Thank you. Thank you very much. And watch out for Safe San Marcos. Okay, on to ordinances. We have ordinance 2025 1562, amending the San Marcos Municipal Code, Chapter 2.16, controls on campaign contributions to increase campaign contribution limits. We do have a few speakers, but I believe we probably have a staff report from our city attorney.
Yes, Madam Mayor, you, you do no fun presentation, but your basic roaring staff report. As the council is aware, the current limit is $250 for individuals and twice that amount or $500 for political party committees and for candidate-controlled committees. The staff report notes that these amounts were set in 2012. However, by my review of previous city ordinances, the number was actually increased in 1990 to 250, from the initially acted, enacted limit of 150 back in 1984. It's just refreshing to see something that actually happened before my time. Accordingly, the $250 limitation has been in place for much longer than was initially thought and literally decades, many more decades than I initially thought. The proposed changes to the section 2.16.030 limits are to increase the limit to $500 for persons and twice that amount or $1,000 effectively for political party committees and for candidate-controlled committees. The $500 amount is also consistent with the restrictions imposed by the Levine Act, which now prohibits local government officials from, local elected government officials from accepting, soliciting, or directing a campaign contribution of more than $500 from a party to or participant in a proceeding relating to a license, permit, or other entitlement while that proceeding is pending and for 12 months following the date that a final decision is made. The city has had similar restrictions in place for contributors of $100 and more in San Marcos Section 2.16.070 for many years. Essentially, the now, the state has now enacted its own voting regulations based on campaign contributions or the pay-to-play contributions, which the city has regulated for decades by way of its voting restrictions. The prior limit of 250 for the state's Levine Act regulations was increased to $500 effective in January of this year. The ordinance also proposes to modify the language of San Marcos Municipal Code, Section 2.16.030 A and B, to conform to the Political Reform Act definition of a person, which includes a proprietorship, firm, partnership, joint venture, company, corporation, LLC, association, et cetera. This would allow persons to make campaign contributions through their businesses. Is, if adopted, council members would need to monitor donations from businesses to ensure that in aggregation, these contributions do not exceed applicable limits to trigger voting restrictions and limitations, both with respect to the city's ordinance and with respect to the Levine Act limitations as well. As the Levine Act and its voting restrictions are now applicable to local elected officials, San Marcos Municipal Code, Section 2.16.070, restrictions on voting and receipt of funds, which were adopted when there were no such restrictions, are more, are much more onerous in comparison. The Levine Act provides that an elected official cannot participate in a license, permit, entitlement proceeding if a campaign contribution of more than $500 has been accepted, solicited, or directed. The city's ordinance prohibits any decision having a reasonably foreseeable impact, material financial impact, on a contributor that is distinguishable from its impact on the public generally or a significant segment of the public of $100 or more. Staff is suggesting that the city's limitation in Section 2.16.070 A and B be updated to more than $500 so that they are more consistent with the Levine Act limitations, simply because it's, it's just so confusing to have different layers of, of limitations. And quite frankly, 2.16.070, now that the Levine Act is actually applicable to local affected, elected officials, could, could be struck in favor of the Levine Act. It could be deleted altogether, but if, if it is to be retained, our suggestion is that it be $500, more than $500, so that you're at least consistent with the Levine Act and the city's campaign contributions ordinance and that there wouldn't be the possibility of, of, you know, being, running a file of one and not the other. And that essentially concludes the staff report for the proposed ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Mrs. Peak. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Peak? Yes, Councilmember LeBlanc.
Just one quick question. So when we amend the definition of individual and we're making that now a business, so let's say there were, and I know we can't exceed the $500 with the business, so let's say there are two owners of a business, so each one of them could only give 250, correct? Or if there were four owners, it basically, any of the owners cannot exceed 500? Is that how that would work?
Generally speaking, businesses in the forms of things like sole proprietorships, closely-held corporations or whatnot, are treated by the FPPC as the same legal entity as the individual owners. So you would have to, you know, if there was a sole proprietorship or an LLC with two people and they've already donated, that could prove problematic. So you'd have to be alive to that, which is why I referenced that in the staff report, because the FPPC does treat those, those sometimes as aggregated contributions. Now, you know, we all know that husbands and wives can separately contribute, but it also has, it also has to do with how that money is actually offered and contributed. And, you know, if, if the FPPC can construe that that is actually one person or one account that's controlled by one person, then that is, they're going to, they're not going to aggregate them, but if they can, they will aggregate. And that is often to the detriment of the, of the elected official. So it just, it just means you do have to take care, which is why the 250 limit was great for me because I didn't have to worry about anything, but it, it really is a limit that has perhaps seen its time. In the event that the council goes for the higher limit of 500, it would still be higher than seven other cities that were surveyed on the, on the chart. It would also be lower than eight others' cities, as well as the county of San Diego. So it's basically right in the middle.
Just one follow-up question to that. So somebody could not, if it was a business owner, they cannot give on their own behalf as an individual and then on behalf of the business as well? Is that correct?
It depends on the form of the business and whether it could, could be construed as something in the, in the realm of a sole proprietorship or, you know, just a very closely-held business. You know, essentially, if you can, if you can pierce that veil and it runs down to one person and that one person has already contributed, then you at least run the risk of running a file of the limit if you accept it from both.
Okay, thanks.
It was my understanding that if an individual donates and they have a majority interest in the business, they've effectively negated the opportunity for the business. As an individual, but certainly somebody else within the business could, but not as the business.
Right. And then, you know, the FPPC does, has on occasion investigated contributions from businesses to see whether or not there was a concerted effort. I think, for example, Lucardi Construction ran a file of that many years ago. So, you know, to whatever extent the FPPC takes a look at those things, I think just the, the consultation between people, you know, the, the nature and scope of the business, whether it is a larger business with people that would independently contribute, you know, it, it all makes a difference and they're all factors considered by the FPPC. And by special counsel appointed by the city, because we have that too.
Okay, all right. We do have some speakers on this item, so I think we should listen to them first and then we can have further discussion. First up is Allison Stanton, followed by Paul Mendoza, then Alan Garachi. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Allison Stanton. I'm a proud San Marcos resident and a recent candidate for our city council. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and share my perspective on the proposal to increase the individual campaign contribution limit from 250 to $500. It's well-understood that prices in general have gone up, so the, the concept of needing to increase something is not, it's not on deaf ears. But as someone running a grassroots campaign, I can tell you this issue matters. While it may seem like a small change on paper, it has a real impact on how campaigns are run and how candidates engage with our community. In my experience, the current 250 limit encourages candidates like myself to get out and meet people where they are, in their neighborhoods, at local events, and through genuine conversation, face to face. It helps keep the focus on relationships, not just fundraising goals. Raising the limit could unintentionally shift that balance. Candidates with broader financial networks, especially those with connections outside of San Marcos, may be able to rely more on high-dollar contributions and less on local outreach. That changes the tone and structure of campaigns in ways we should think carefully about. According to a 2018 research poll, 77% of Americans support limits on campaign contributions, and 74% believe it's very important that no group or no political, that has more political influence than others based on wealth. These concerns reflect a desire for fairness and balance in our elections, a value I believe we all share. This change may also increase the roles of individuals who regularly contribute to local elections, including some with development or business interests in the city. While all voices deserve to be heard, and that matters, we should be cautious to not unintentionally tip the scales in the favor of those with greater financial resources. Studies show that contribution limits rise, we often see fewer candidates and more repeat victors for incumbents, not necessarily because they're the best choice, but because others struggle to compete financially. More funding also typically means more flyers, more trash, more mailers, and more ads. These tools are helpful, but they can start to replace personal connection with mass communication. I worry we could lose some of the direct engagement that many local elections. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Allison. Next up is Paul Mendoza, followed by Alan Garachi, then Chris Freeman. Welcome.
Hello, city councilmembers. I'm Paul Mendoza. I'm speaking today in opposition of this proposal. Originally, when I heard the proposal to raise the campaign contribution limit from 250 to 500, I wasn't that opposed to it. But this last weekend, I spent a lot of hours going over the campaign finance filings on our website and on the San Diego County Register of Voters and have changed my mind. I'd like to review how much is being spent on city council races. I'll be rounding the numbers to the nearest. I'll be rounding the numbers to the nearest thousand. So, starting from the lowest fundraiser to the highest fundraiser, Councilmember Nunez in 2022 didn't file anything, so I don't think she hit the $2,000 limit to have to file for committee. Councilmember LeBlanc, in 2024, LeBlanc raised $13,000 in contributions. Additional political action committees spent $29,000 supporting you. This means $43,000 was spent electing Councilmember LeBlanc to city council. Councilmember Sinella, in 2022, you raised $15,000 in contributions for your run for city council. Additionally, $7,000 was spent by PACs. $23,000 was spent in total electing you to city council. Councilmember Musgrove, in 2022, you raised 30, oh, sorry, 2024, you raised $39,000 in contributions over 2024 and 2023. Additionally, political action committees spent another $14,000 supporting you. This means $53,000 was spent electing Councilmember Musgrove to the second term on city council. And finally, the absolute gold medal winner of our fundraising Olympics here is our mayor, Rebecca Jones. The mayor raised for the 2022 campaign, raised $77,000 in contributions. The political action committee spent another about $80,000 supporting her race. That means it costs about $157,000 for you to win your mayor's race. So just the money spent in contributions, not PAC money, just contributions, was $144,000. The competitors only raised $74,000 in contributions. If we add all these together, that's $218,000 between the winners and the ones who didn't win. That's $218,000 for the 2022 and 2024 election cycles. If we add in the PAC money to that, that's $349,000 that was spent on elections in San Marcos over the two election cycles. So I feel like there's enough money in politics here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Alan Garaci, followed by Chris Freeman, and then... Sorry, can't, oh, Liliana Anderson. I need my granny glasses for that. Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen of the community. My name's Alan Geraci. I'm a San Marcos resident and a business owner. I want to talk a little bit more in the broader sense about money in politics. The Supreme Court has shaped the landscape of money in politics through several key decisions, notably stating in the Buckley versus Vallejo '76 decision and culminating in the Citizens United versus Federal Election Commission 2010 decision. These cases, among others, have established that campaign spending is a form of speech protected by the First Amendment, leading to significant changes in campaign finance regulations. Yet, 72% say that there should be limits on the amount of money individuals and organizations can spend on political campaigns, and 60% of voters say it's possible to have laws that would effectively reduce the role of money in politics. So money in politics has shaped the political landscape here in San Marcos as well. Since I moved here in 2008, I have followed the particular expenditures of political action committees since 2016. Of particular concern has been the ongoing practice of the Deputy Sheriff's Association Political Action Committee, who file reports for what's called independent expenditures every election cycle. And I do note that I'm distinguishing their political arm from the fine deputy members who serve our community and communities throughout San Diego County. Here's how the scheme works. Citizens are not fond of development in their community, so developers limit their direct contributions to local council and mayor's races, and instead, they make sizable contributions to the Deputy Sheriff's Association PAC that then is laundered in favor of the same local candidates. Meanwhile, back in San Marcos, the Deputy Sheriff's Association PAC endorses the developer-friendly candidate who advertise themselves as law enforcement's choice and then get elected on these fake public safety platforms. Rinse, spin, and repeat for the next cycle. Between 2021 and 2024, the Deputy Sheriff's Association PAC raised 721,000, of which more than half was spent by the Sheriff's Association. Money in politics is toxic. Nationwide, it's corroding our democratic institutions. Our elections should be conducted without the penetration of dark money invading this process. It's time for San Marcos to break this chain of deception. Let's vote against this campaign contribution change.
Thank you, Mr. Garaci. And this is just a comment, not a discussion. However, the Deputy Sheriff's Association is actually run by deputies. The deputies are in the Deputy Sheriff's Association, so when you say that, you are saying that about our deputies when you're saying nasty things like money laundering. I don't believe that's correct. Anyway, go ahead, Mr. Freeman. Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. As always, I come to you tonight with the utmost respect, not only for the offices that you hold, but yourself as individuals, and the hard work that you take on daily in your elected positions. And all of the meetings that I've been to or watched online, I've never seen any resident stand up here and say, "I think we need more money in politics." I've never seen any posts online of people complaining about how low our contribution limits are, and you know that they would, because you can find complaints online for just about anything. But really, how does tonight's action benefit the residents of San Marcos? I'm disappointed by what's being proposed. I've always heard this group say that the great thing about San Marcos is that there are no partisan politics here, that we stay in our lane, but tonight, we're comparing our limits to the limits of other cities, other cities that we say are much more partisan than we are. As we all know, campaign contributions are public record, and overwhelming majority of all of your campaign contributions come in at the maximum amount and largely from These are from wealthy affluent individuals that can afford to donate the maximum amount of 250 and many times $500 as a couple. A very small percentage of your donations actually come from average San Marcos residents donating less than $100. The first paragraph of the current San Marcos ordinance reads, and I'll paraphrase, "It is the intent of the city council to place realistic and enforceable limits on the amounts which may be contributed to ensure against election victories based primarily on the amount expended on campaigns." But tonight, we want to double those amounts, double what our wealthy friends can give, so that the small donor makes up an even smaller amount of what each of you raise. This action tonight doesn't level the playing field, it deepens the class divide in our town. This change ensures that the everyday resident in our town gets shut out, that their small donation is dwarfed by the contributions from the affluent out-of-town donors. We've all heard of one person, one vote, but not when it comes to campaign contributions. If you have the means, you can outspend your neighbor. A $500, $1,000 limit ensures that one person or a couple of means has a much louder voice than their neighbor across town. We want politicians to knock on more doors and connect with more people, not spend more money on mailers and yard signs. If you really wanted to stand up for the average San Marcos resident tonight, modify this ordinance to lower the limit to $100. That means that more San Marcos residents can make contributions to get involved in their local races without the fear that rich out-of-towners will just outspend them 10, five to tenfold. I get that it's hard. It's hard to fundraise. It's the necessary evil that goes along with running for office, but we have an opportunity to put an end to it tonight. Cap the limits at $100 so that everyone finds room in their budget to make a donation and get an equal voice, to feel like their contribution mattered. I always want to set a good example for my children about how to get involved, but I want them to know that it's the message and not the money that's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All the public speakers have finished. Any discussion? Oh, I'm so sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. My apologies. I'm sorry about that.
I'm Liliana Anderson. Good evening, everybody.
Anderson, sorry about that.
I'm here to speak against the raising of the maximum campaign donation. I think Citizens United and Elon Musk, "More money in politics" is not a good idea. Let's ask ourselves, how many average Joes in San Marcos are able to give $500 to a city council candidate? In my estimation, not many. And why would they? Why would someone give $500? Let's just file that under things that make you go, hmm. And going through some of the contributions that went to our mayor in the last race, there were some interesting trends, and one stood out, that there were some big money dump days that flowed in from contributions. The biggest was September 16th, 2021, when there were 31 contributions totaling $7,401. So who are these people that mostly gave $250, all at the same time? About half of them came from either people who work in construction or in the real estate industry. I don't know. Did our mayor go to some event around September 16th and collect a bunch of checks? I don't know. Just asking. Also, in the same month, there were six employees from Robert Green Company who all contributed 250 each. The Robert Green Company is a commercial real estate development company. There are other clusters of contributions. Four employees at Subbury Properties each gave $250. Four employees at Superior Ready Mix Concrete also gave 250 each. Would these employees have given $500 each instead of 250? Hmm, maybe. Changing the Levine Act, I think, would give our city council members a chance to find So, I mean, and anyway, y'all got PAC money, okay? Little over 80 grand over here, okay? And I don't mean to keep picking on you, but you're, you are the biggest target, let's face it. Okay? So let's not bring more money into this, okay? It just pollutes. And don't get it twisted, Ms. Jones, I voted for you, okay, in the last election. I voted for you, but the fact we're talking about this makes me think, hmm, I don't know what I vote for you again. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Liliana. Okay, sorry about that. I didn't mean to skip you. Okay, any discussion amongst the council?
It's interesting to note that this is not something we're doing on our own. This was passed by the state legislature raising this, and the primary goal in this legislation was to put safeguards into place so that more public filing would be available. And when we talk about PACs, there are a lot of PACs. They come in all forms of labor, associations, private groups. We have no control over them. We can't solicit funds from them. We have no control over how the money is spent, so when you get your mailbox full, as mine gets full, with the mailers that come in, unless we have paid for them specifically, we have no control over the production or distribution. And I wasn't going to say this, but I'm gonna say it now, Mr. Geraci, very disingenuous, because you applied for support from the Deputy Sheriff's Association in your 2020 race, and you didn't mention that. You should have. If you're gonna come up and vilify public safety, be honest. Let everybody know. I have the...
I wasn't vilifying public safety, sir. I was...
Excuse me, you're out of order, sir. Thank you.
Okay, so...
You're out of order, sir, please.
The whole idea behind this is to bring us in compliance with what the state has set, not as a ceiling, but as a floor, of where we need to be with our filings, what the members of the public are allowed to donate. We get plenty of donations of $50, $99. I don't think anybody on this council is gonna be bought for a $500 donation. That's not the point. As the city attorney said, it keeps things clean and open with a single dollar amount. Everyone is still free to contribute what they want. But I'll tell you, the cost of running a campaign is not static when this ordinance was first put into place. It's extremely expensive. I think every one of us put in our personal funds as a loan with the expectation that you're not gonna get the money back. I've done it. It's just the cost of doing business. If you want to be on a city council, there are some expenses that come into play. Some you control, most you don't.
And, you know, I'd like to make a comment about that, Councilmember Musgrove. When you say that people have put their money in, actually, if you are unable to raise money, then, and you don't have any money to put in yourself, then it actually could possibly stop you from being able to run for office. Anyway, Deputy Mayor, you had something?
Yeah, thank you. And I don't really have strong feelings one way or the other on this, but I do understand why it does make sense in some ways to bring it, bring our code in compliance, not, compliance is not the right word, but make it consistent with the state and the Levine Act. Having been in politics for quite a long time, you know, running campaigns from the, my days on the waterboard and now the city council, I actually think, there's a few different thought processes. I actually think the lower the limit, it really, it's a huge advantage for the incumbents. Over the decade, or probably 10 years, 12 years that I've been involved in politics, I have a fundraising list of 200 people that I can go ahead and reach out to, that I built those relationships with, friends, families, neighbors, people that do business in the community. If you're getting started, like Allison mentioned, you probably don't have that list of 200 people, right? And so, the people that you, that really believe in you, that really, that you're convinced to have that trust and that comfort level for you to represent them, they very well might give you a $500 check. And that extra money is gonna help you wage a competitive campaign. Whereas, I can reach out to 200 people tonight and probably have checks. The reason why a lot of those contributions came on the same date is the mayor probably had a fundraiser. That's very common in what we do. We spend a lot of time hosting people at restaurants and living rooms and kitchens, backyards. That comes with the territory. That's part of, you know, elections. And we see that every presidential election, when we're going through the primaries and the candidates are, you know, marching through the cities and sitting down with, in cafes, and we do the same thing, just at a smaller level. And so, I really do, I sincerely believe this is, would be a disadvantage not to pass this for the folks that are trying to get into government. And I encourage more people to get into what we do, because our community will be better off with the more people that want to get involved and want to serve and contribute in this type of manner. And so, you know, and common sense also tells me that if, that back in 1990, 35 years ago, a council up here, none of us were on this council at that time, of course, they thought 250 was appropriate. Well, if 250 was appropriate 35 years ago, I think 500 is not unreasonable. I think if we were trying to have, you know, go to a campaign contribution limit that was in the thousands or unlimited or something like, something unreasonable like that, then I would certainly understand and then be agreement with the speakers. But, you know, the other thing I want to say too, because I thought some of the speakers were extremely unfair to the mayor, and if I'm just being honest, kind of, you guys were kind of disappointing tonight. I know a lot of you, I'm friends with you, I've sat in your backyards drinking wine with you, and I know some of this is driven by politics, and I get it, you know, there's unfortunately partisanship in our community. But the mayor also has the exact same campaign contributions as everybody else, but she has to campaign citywide. And so, take the numbers that you mentioned, Paul, about each of the individual council members. And the reason why Councilmember Nunez didn't raise money is because she didn't have an opponent, so she didn't have to. But I guarantee you that if she had an opponent, she would have raised the money. And so, but if you take the numbers that you quoted for us, and you multiplied them by four, four districts, they almost balance out. So I wish you would have maybe pointed that out too, but I support this because, mainly because it's been 35 years. There's a few things that I've learned, this is my first term on the council, I know I'm kind of rambling on right now, but there's some city council operational things that like our salaries, our benefits, that haven't been looked at in decades. And this is one of those things. And, you know, are we gonna never look and evaluate the different things that govern the council itself? Are we gonna wake up 20 more years from now and it's still gonna be 250? At some point, you have to look at the rules that govern the council, and you have to make those adjustments from time to time. And this is, tonight, we're looking at the campaign contributions, they haven't been changed in 35 years, and I don't think we're recommending anything that's unreasonable.
And the city of Alcohont has a contribution limit of $10,000. We're talking 500 per individual, it's $10,000. So... So, anyway, okay, Councilmember Nunez, you were next.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna thank the speakers for coming in and raising some of the issues that they did. I absolutely agree that there is a lot of disparity in the city and in the district, there's no question about it. However, I don't think that's really what's in front of us tonight in this agenda item. I'm gonna be supporting this item tonight, and I'm gonna be supporting it for some of the reasons that have been stated. I agree that this is a reasonable increase, considering how long it's been since this issue was decided by, by council. I'm also gonna be supporting this because I agree with the consistency and what the California Legislature has determined as a reasonable amount, and this amount was said January 2025, earlier this year, and I think it does help to create consistency. So I'm not offended by the limits. I do tend to agree that in fact, these low limits that we have can be burdensome for, for campaigning and some of the candidates. I do think that the disparity, obviously, there is a conversation to be had, and look to see how we can improve what that actually looks like, and what representation looks like here on the city council. But I don't think that's what's in front of us tonight. So I will be supporting this item tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember LeBlanc.
So I'm also supporting this. As a new candidate last cycle, I can attest firsthand that it is very hard to raise money. And we have had these limits in place for so many years, but I am also a big fan of grassroots campaigning. I walked my, my whole district almost two full times by myself, my husband, I had a couple volunteers, but it was mainly me, my husband, and my kids out there every weekend. And some of the most meaningful and precious donations to me were $5 that I would get mailed, or $25. So I think that streamlining our campaign contribution limits to raise them to a simple $500 across the board, it's consistent with the Levine Act, it's consistent with everything, it avoids confusion with any triggers with regard to any sort of conflict or having to recuse ourselves. But I also think that $500 is still low enough to maintain that grassroots campaign feel. So that's why I'm supporting this.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Okay.
Mayor, if I may, I have a clarifying question for Helen. Can you talk about the timeline? When would this go into effect?
This is the introduction, the first reading. There would be a second reading, which is going to be in September, because you're dark in August, and then it would be effective 30 days after that. But it, its impact or effect would be for this election, so it wouldn't be, it would allow contributions for this election, you know, from people who have already donated, they would be able to donate to the max, the new maximum for this election, yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
For clarify, clarification, that would be an introduction, Councilmember. Okay, let's see, Public Hearings, Resolution 2025-9477, confirming the diagram and assessment and providing for the levy of the annual assessment of the Landscape and Lighting District Number One for fiscal year 2025-26. Sorry, Michelle, do you have a, a brief, I think it's brief?
Yes, no, no presentation, but just a brief introduction. This is a public hearing to receive public input on the proposal, on the proposed levy of assessments for fiscal year 25-26 for the City of San Marcos Landscaping and Lighting District Number One. The Landscaping and Lighting Assessment Act of 1972 requires that districts formed under its provisions be renewed each fiscal year in which an assessment is to be levied. The city council adopted the resolution to approve the preliminary engineer's report on June 24th, and will be conducting the hearing now this evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have three public speakers, I'd like to take those first, and then we can have our discussion. Paul Mendoza, followed by Natalie Aguilar, followed by Chris Freeman.
Okay, I did not do as much research on this, but when I read the, so my understanding is that we are losing, well, we have communities that aren't paying enough taxes to fund the maintenance that we're doing in those areas. We have the option, is my understanding, to not do that maintenance, and they could take on that work themselves. So we're paying, we collect $500,000, but we're paying an additional $660,000 to do that maintenance on, on the areas. But they, we don't have to, it's, it's optional, is my understanding. Also, the part that I'm here to really discuss is, in the engineer's report, it says, "All landscaping improvements have or are under the process of being accepted by the City of San Marcos for maintenance." So I'm not sure why we're taking on more, lot more responsibility for this, for this maintenance. I feel like we should just stop, stop taking on any more maintenance for these areas. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Natalie Aguilar, followed by Chris Freeman.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Natalie. I've lived in San Marcos for about 16 years, so that means most of my life. And today, I'm speaking on behalf of Universidad Popular. We hope that funding allocations like the one presented for landscaping and lighting District Number One for fiscal year 2025-2026 are being allocated in an equitable manner where one community isn't favored over another. We know there are parts of our city lacking sufficient infrastructure, such as lighting and sidewalks. For example, there are some areas of District One still lacking lighting all along Mission Road, a major roadway in our city. We support safe, clean, and well-lit streets in our city. We want this for everybody in our city, not just for the more affluent neighborhoods. All of us are for responsible budgeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Next up is Chris Freeman.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers, and thank you for all the comments and insight on the last item, I appreciate it. I'm here tonight because LLMDs have come up a few times in the Budget Review Committee, and I've gotten some good explanations from staff, but I still wanna, I guess publicly clarify what we're looking at. So, on the engineer's report, page seven, the LLMD sheet, this is the same sheet that appears in the budget book every year, towards the end, under special revenues. We collect $530,000 every year from those five communities, and that amount was frozen when Prop 218 came out, so that doesn't have an escalator anymore. So since then, we've had to supplement the maintenance of those five neighborhoods from the general fund. So on the budget summary under revenues, there's $660,000 transfer from the general fund to this account to cover that. But then if you look further below, under the operating expenditures, total operating expenditures for the year are over $2 million, but we only brought in 1.19. So we're not only subsidizing the maintenance in these areas by $660,000, there's another 840,000 from, it's not clear to me where, where that money comes from. So I think, I just wanna know, if you guys understand, if you're comfortable with it, I think eventually, something's gonna have to change, because as costs go up every year and we continue to collect $530,000 from those property owners, I mean, eventually, the city will go bankrupt, right? 400 years from now, I don't know. But it seems like there's several options. I understand, one of the options is you go to the neighborhood and they put it to a vote if they wanna annex from the LLMD to the CFD, so that there's an escalator again. I think that's been tried once, and that community voted it down. So then the other option would be that the city, in Paul's words, not stops maintenance, but stops subsidizing the maintenance. We bring our maintenance level down to $530,000 to match what they're contributing. So that's, that's my question for this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, any discussion among the council?
Are we permanently locked in to the Prop 218 number? So we have to find workarounds, and that comes from the general fund, there's no other revenue stream that we could?
That's, that's correct. Proposition 218 was, did not allow for automatic annual escalators, since the formation documents did not have that built in.
Another state law that, sorry.
I remember we had this discussion about a year and a half ago with Discovery Meadows about maintenance, and the city manager and I were just talking about this yesterday.
They were just formed before escalators were, were implemented. And escalators were implemented and were necessary because of Prop 218. So those are, you know, they, they just sort of evolved, and this is, this is a nascent form of trying to recover some of the cost for making the city look the way that it does.
And I don't know that holding to that 500, is it 550, the, the base fund, we're not gonna have the same city. We're just not. And I don't know that we're supplementing, we're taking care of our community and our residents as an expectation would be. We, we all pay our property taxes, and they're not cheap, but we are not a, a cash-rich city. We, we work on a very thin margin, but I don't think we wanna start, you know, making our residents suffer with the maintenance, streetlights, the things that we just come to expect because this is a well-maintained city. And I do appreciate, Chris, your, your homework on this, and your comments are, are well-taken. I don't know that we have another option, if we wanna continue keeping San Marcos the way it is.
Well, I, I'd like to weigh in on this a little bit. I don't know, was that a question of staff? I'm not sure.
It started out that way, and then it turned into a sermon.
Well, I, I'm just, I, you know, looking at the maps, I know the city pretty well. By the way, I walked and I knocked on 19,000 doors in my last election. It was hard work. You know, when I look at this map and I look at the areas that are adjacent to the roadways, for instance, Discovery Hills, I'll use that as an example because I know that very well, and we all know that very well. On all the side, both sides of the road and the median, it's all beautiful and lush and green, that's part of this. That's actually part of what we're paying for. Borden Road and Santa Fe Hills, all of this area that is deemed to be called, you know, open space, and it's, you know, being maintained by the city and it's being supplemented, it's actually, part of it is alongside the, the roadways. I for one would not be happy if I saw the sides of our road, driving down Craven Road, looking ugly and dry and not maintained to the way that I think we should maintain that. So I, I will be in favor of this, for the simple fact, I mean, we obviously should try to figure out if we can recoup the cost, but I don't think that should be the only basis of whether we pay to have this, to, you know, to supplement this. And, and you know, yes, everyone should have streetlights, you know, development pays for streetlights, and then we have to upkeep it. So they give us an asset, and we have to pay for it ongoing. So it's not something that generally comes free, but it generally is placed within areas. And, and by the way, I think we are, I think we're moving, it's kind of off-topic, but I think we are moving forward with Scott Peterson's office to get some lighting for District One, are we not?
Yes, you caught me, I was about to-
Sorry.
-text, text a friend, because I believe that part of our Q funding, we have put aside money for additional lighting. We've done an assessment based on need, using crime statistics, and we're gonna be prioritizing additional lighting using a more quantifiable method, and we, we have done that assessment, and we're starting to prioritize. So lighting is a priority-
Yes.
-and our Q funding is going to help us with that.
Perfect. And, but like even on Craven Road, for instance, in Santa Fe Hills and all of that, I don't wanna have no streetlights. I, I don't think that's safe, I don't think that's smart. So anyway, I will be supporting this, this evening for the reasons that I just said. And, you know, again, a lot of the things that we're looking at, if we can, if we can figure out how to, to, you know, have people annex into the new landscape and lighting, we should definitely try to do that. But if it doesn't end up happening, I don't want that to be the reason that our city does not look as beautiful as it looks, because, let's face it, we drive down the road, we just expect it. It's like when you turn on, on a faucet, you expect water to come out. In San Marcos, you expect the community to look beautiful. So, anyway, and I see some Discovery Hill residents out there. We, we want the city to look beautiful. So, anyway, those would be the reasons that I would support this. Yes, Deputy Mayor, you have some discussion?
Yeah, I, I agree, and I will be supporting as well, but-
Okay.
-I think we heard loud and clear from our residents during the Measure Q initiative-
Yep.
-that they have an expectation of this community, and we've been, this community's been delivering on that expectation, and because of that trust that's been built with, with our residents, it passed overwhelmingly, in large part. And it's not a subsidy, it's, it's a, it really is a core city service, and because of the law that was put in place through Proposition 218, we're limited to what we can collect. That doesn't mean that we should punish our residents and take away those, what they're used to from, from a quality of life and just a quality of our community, because we know what they expect, and we wanted, we wanna deliver that. And so they pay sales taxes, they pay property taxes, like Councilmember Musgrove said, and I don't think the right solution is to sacrifice our spending on what, you know, the things that make our city safe and, and look nice. And I do trust our staff too, I think that they do a phenomenal job as, finding ways to achieve these goals in, in the most efficient way. And I think that's also reflective of what we learned during Measure Q, and then earlier today with our new fire station workshop. It's because of the good health that our city is in, that we've had, we have options to be able to do these types of things. And it's because of the support from our residents with passing Measure Q, that we have options to do these types of things. And I think it's a, it's a expectation of our residents, and I'm fully supportive of supporting them on that.
Okay, this is a public hearing, do, yes?
Madam Mayor, I have questions and, and comments.
Oh, oh, yeah, you could still, actually, we could close the public hearing, we just can't hear anymore from the public. I was just going to close the-
Their way, I have questions.
Yeah, it's, anyway, motion to close the public hearing?
No more speakers?
No.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Nunez, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Of course.
When I look at the fiscal impact of this, of this item and what we're doing, I am concerned when I see this amount of money, right, that we're going to, it sounds like approving tonight. And I do take very serious some of the, some of the questions that I heard from our public comment. So for instance, it's not clear to me whether or not we do have an obligation to do this. That is something that, it's not clear to me, so I would like clarification on that. And then the other question that was raised is whether or not we have an obligation to maintain the level of service that we've been delivering. That's also not clear to me whether or not there are options there. I completely agree that we should provide maintenance and high quality of, of service and expectations that our residents demand. But having said that, I do agree that there's disparity in our city, and that that should be applicable to all parts of the city, if that is gonna be the standard that we're gonna have. So I'm gonna approve this item tonight, but I believe that this is something that we should revisit as a council.
Sorry, sorry, I have a question on that. What part of it should we revisit as a council, Councilmember? I'm unclear of that.
So for me, one question is whether or not we do have, what our legal obligation is, number one, and two, as far as the maintenance level, that's also not clear to me. Or what options there are, if there are any. Or what options there are, if there are any.
Our legal obligation, I will have Donna jump in if I'm misstating. We are obligated to spend the money that we get in from the Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District on lighting and landscape maintenance in that area. So we couldn't just take that money and spend it on parks and wrecks. So that is a legal obligation. As far as the legal obligation to maintain to a certain standard, as a city from a liability perspective, we should always make sure that we're maintaining to a safety standard. So if there are branches that look like they might fall into the right of way, we should ensure that that does not happen and we take care of it. Otherwise, we essentially could have a city in any state of disrepair or lack of maintenance. There's no legal obligation to make San Marcos look like San Marcos. So we've checked in with Public Works to understand if we were to only spend the money we get in, what level of service could we expect? And we could collect trash from the trashcans in these areas to make sure that there wasn't trash in the streets. And we could ensure that limbs mostly, we hope, don't fall on people. But we wouldn't really be able to provide much more than that for the amount of money that we're taking in because of Prop 218.
Additionally, in the event there is, there are facilities and infrastructure that have been installed, such as streetlights and
Fencing, fencing is part of it, definitely.
Hardscape, streetscape, whatever, and it's not maintained to a health and safety level. That, as Michelle has noted, I think, you know, the city would be looking at potential exposure. Because, you know, once you assume an obligation for maintenance of a facility, unless you're going to be actively removing those facilities, which have actually been paid for over the years, at least in part by specific groups of persons paying their taxes, that is, that's a potential for litigation, I think. And exposure for the city if the services aren't continued to at least an acceptable health and safety level. So.
There are circumstances where HOAs will assume that responsibility, but we can't expect them to assume the responsibility on public lands. If it's an HOA property, a common use area, that's one thing. But when our residents already pay property taxes with an expectation of service, to then have an HOA raise their assessment for something that is perceived to have already been covered by the city, I think is really a slap in the face of the residents. And I just think it's an obligation we have as a city to maintain that standard. It's what keeps our property values up. It encourages businesses to come into town. It's what makes us a healthy city. And I just don't see a way around it. And even if we had the opportunity to raise that levy, I don't know if there's an appetite for doing that either. I think it's just, it's a burden we bear as a city and as the council. We have to make that tough decision. And I think our staff did a great job of identifying what can be done to keep the safety level, the maintenance and the appearance up beyond what the levy allows.
Well, and just, you know, specifically about Discovery Hills, for instance. And I did mention we have some residents in the, in the audience today that live in Discovery Hills. For instance, the walking trails that are adjacent to Craven Road, all the lodgepole fencing, all of that is, it falls with under this. It falls within this area that we're talking about. That I just happen to know off the top of my head. So when we're thinking about, would we possibly think about not making that look nice? I'm a hard no on that. I mean, there's no way that I would vote against not having it look the way that we like the rest of the city to look. And I don't think it's a benefit to just the community or just that neighborhood. I think it's a benefit to the entire community. I don't live in Discovery, but I've certainly walked on the trails there numerous times and on the ones on Craven Road, which fall within this. So I wouldn't want lodgepole fencing to be falling down and, you know, tree branches maybe not, you know, maybe not falling into the actual thing. But, you know, I think it's important that we have a standard. And our standard is the San Marcos Way. And, you know, just because the state has gotten in our way and they have taken away our ability, they do it all the time, for us to be able to levy the tax. I don't, I'm not saying we shouldn't try to figure out how to recoup some of these dollars. But I don't think that would be a reason that I would say absolutely if we cannot get the residents to actually pay for this communal sort of area, I don't think that's a reason that we should not pay to maintain it the way that we want it to be maintained. And hey, listen, I'm going to be out of here next year. It's going to be my last year in office here in San Marcos. I don't want everything that we have fought for for all of these years to fall apart and look ugly. That's important for me, that we keep our city looking nice. I still live here. I don't want it to not be maintained. So anyway, any further discussion? Yes, Councilmember LeBlanc?
Yeah, just to add on to that, our neighborhoods and areas of the city don't exist in a vacuum. We should all be considered as one. And when the state takes away a lot of our power, we want to make sure at the city level, we're doing everything we can to support our residents, to support all of our neighborhoods, and make sure that all of San Marcos lives up to the standards that we have set for it.
That's well said. And I just want to reiterate what our legal counsel said. It's beyond just taking away, it would be beyond just taking away the maintenance of these facilities. We may actually, in some cases, have to remove them, which makes no sense at all, which comes at its own expense, but also really detracts from what our residents are used to. And so I think it's very reasonable to use our residents' tax dollars, sales tax and property taxes primarily, to make sure that our, that our quality of life and that these amenities that make San Marcos so nice, that our residents are getting, you know, they're getting what they paid for through their taxes. And I really truly believe that Measure Q was, you know, spoke volumes of what they expect from us. And they delivered for us with their vote and their support, and now we need to continue delivering for them.
Okay. This was a public hearing. We already closed the public hearing. I make a motion to adopt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Seeing none. Moving on to item number 15, Resolution 2025-9478, confirming the diagram and assessment and providing for the levy of the annual assessment of Vallecitos Town Center Street Maintenance District for Fiscal Year 2526. I believe we have just a brief discussion on this? Or staff, staff presentation-ish? Not sure.
Yes, no presentation. Just as an introduction, again, this is a public hearing to receive the public input on proposed levy of assessments for Fiscal Year 2526 for the San Marcos Vallecitos Town Center Street Maintenance District. The Street Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972 requires that districts formed under its provisions be renewed each fiscal year in which an assessment is to be levied. So tonight is that public hearing.
We do this every year. We're so lucky. No, just kidding. Okay, do we have any discussion on this item? We have no public speakers. All right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, or second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second, motion to adopt? I'm sorry, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? No? Okay, motion passes unanimously. No further oral communications? Oh, we do, we have one. Okay, Flower Alvarez Lopez, welcome.
Good evening, council. For the record, my name is Flower Alvarez Lopez. I'm the co-director of Universidad Popular based here in North County, San Diego. Just wanted to come greet y'all on the record real quickly. I know I've been gone a couple of weeks traveling for work. We have a lot of exciting things coming out of our office here in San Marcos, so we'll be following up with y'all. I am participating in an institute cohort here in San Marcos, and the graduation's going to be in August, so I will be sending out invitations. Hopefully, some of y'all can attend and maybe get some certificates for the Impacted Leaders Institute that is being hosted by our state partner at Initiate Justice. So I'll be reaching out to you all about that, but I hope you all have a good evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Flower. Next up is Reports Sandag. Our last meeting, the big topic was a pay increase for our executive director, which, by the way, he's great. Mario Orso, he took over for Hassan Akkada, and he has brought some great cost savings. We actually just received, or we just hired our Director of Internal Controls at Sandag, which is a new position to the agency, which will be looking at a lot of different things, but mostly to make sure that we are spending money in the right way, which I know, sounds shocking at Sandag, but it is. So anyway, we're going to be, or she's going to be really delving into things because some of the board members were originally saying, well, it's okay once our internal or outside independent auditor actually looks at things, well, then we'll find out if there are any issues. But we need to, I said, well, we need to actually figure out ahead of time so we can actually be doing it ahead of time. We don't want to find out that we've done things the wrong way. And then a lot of our internal process is sole sourcing, that sort of thing. We're going to be having that also as one of our main focuses moving forward with our new, with our executive director when he reports out. It's one of the things that he's going to be adding. But other than that, not too much happened. We do have a meeting this week, and we did vote to increase this by 3%. All right, next up, League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove.
We meet next month, Mayor.
Okay, North County Transit District.
Yeah, we had a quick, short meeting last week. In addition to the consent calendar items, we had two informational items. We received the presentation on Sandag's draft 2025 regional plan. And then we received an update, NCTD, just for some background, recently brought the bus and maintenance operations in-house. It was being outsourced. And so we got an update on how that was going, and it's going good. And we're dark next month in August. And our CEO has committed to come, if you remember from our last meeting for the NCTD Plus, Councilwoman Nunez, you had asked for an update. They're going to come present to us on September 23rd.
And he's going to have ridership numbers, yes?
Yes.
Great, okay. North County Dispatch Joint Powers Authority, Councilmember LeBlanc?
We meet next month.
Okay, Clean Energy Alliance, Councilmember Nunez?
Thank you, Mayor. We meet next week, July 31st, at 2:00 PM at the Oceanside City Council Chambers.
Okay, City Council Business Visits. It was a tough one for me. I just had an hour and 40-minute lunch. I ate a lot. I ate way too much. And so there we are, in front of MOA Fitness. It was hard.
Are you sore?
Well, I was sore from the day before because I had scooped ice cream for two hours. So my arm was already hurting, and so I was like, okay, I'm taking it easy on the weights. So I used very small weights, but it was hard.
I wonder if staff's starting to send us a message, because we had the, Maria and I were doing the sports massages. Ed was doing martial arts last month.
I was taking pictures.
It was, it was super hard. Like, I just got there, and then it was like, boom. I was, I was having to work out.
The mayor found time to get a tattoo on her right arm.
That's a temporary tattoo. It was my ice cream tattoo. I actually took it off this morning. I went, oh, gosh, everyone's going to think, well, it doesn't matter if you have a tattoo, but I'm just saying, everyone's going to think I have one. I don't. It was an ice cream. Anyway, so do you want to start out? Because it was fun. It was definitely fun.
So we had a fun workout. Some of our city staff joined us. We had a few people from finance, and then we had Tess and Sarah joined us from Economic Development. So it was a great class. So this gym is actually co-owned by one of my good friends. Her name's Cynthia Pichardo and Natalie Hoboyen. And Cynthia recently joined in ownership there. She used to be the head coach at Orange Theory here in San Marcos. So she's been working out there for years, and she has had experience as a coach there, but she recently became a co-owner. So the gym is focused on functional fitness. So they do CrossFit, traditional CrossFit, but they also have a great Strong and Fit class. So that is more of the class that we took, more of a Strong and Fit class that's focused on strength. And they use a lot of traditional CrossFit equipment, like Assault Bike. You can see us there on the Assault Bike in the bottom. They use dumbbells, kettlebells, just all different than normal types of equipment that you'd see in a CrossFit gym. But they are female-owned, and they are very focused on all levels, and they're really focused on community. That's something that really makes them stand out. They do a lot of community competitions. They are welcoming to everybody. They offer personal training. They offer youth athletic training that they're just starting. So if anybody has any youth teams that would be interested in doing some training, conditioning, they would be great to reach out to. They do class packs. They do month-to-month memberships. You can also just drop in anytime you want for a class. You can find their class schedule on their website, and they have lots of classes different times. So I actually worked out here during the pandemic because they were allowed to stay open. You can see they have a really nice open garage windows. So they did outdoor workouts. It was a really great place. So I think I might have to get a class pack and go back. So what'd you think?
I thought it was great, and it was great to see because, you know, well, there we are, we're all sitting. That was hard. Tess and I were like, this is dead. Anyway, and, but it's in small, small bites. So that's kind of, that's a part that I actually like. Because you do, you do it not for like the whole time, so you're kind of getting some, you know, as soon as you're going, I can't do it anymore, then you switch and you do something else, which was great. But they also, I thought a good part, and I didn't, I don't, I don't think I did do it. But they were like, oh, if you have knee problems, you can actually change it up and do this instead. So they gave you options. So really, everyone at a different level could, could do it. And, you know, I thought too, you know, I'd never been on an Assault Bike, to be honest. I know.
Really?
Yeah. I seem like I had been, right?
Yes, you looked like a pro.
I was like, oh, I was going, oh, gosh, this is hard. No, I'm just kidding. No, it was just because I'd eaten so much at lunch. Anyway, I think it's really good, and they also are very encouraging to one another, which I thought that was good, too. So it's like, come on, you can do it. They were, I felt like there was a lot of that camaraderie that is an important part of it. Because, you know, no one wants to feel judged when you're at the gym, especially if you're really tired that day or whatever. I feel like it was a really inclusive place where you could really be encouraged to do your best, even if you weren't really feeling it right away. And I actually, I started out slow, but I, by the end, by the end, I was really on a roll. And then I was like, oh, I actually am now ready to go more. But I had to, I had to actually go to work, so I couldn't do that. Anyway, so I thought it was great, and it's right there at Twin Oaks, right by St. Augustine, in that
Behind the KRC Rock building.
Yeah, KRC Rock. So it's beautiful out there. Lots of wind coming through. So you've got also, you know, a nice atmosphere. And as you said, they were outside during the pandemic, I guess. They, they have a really nice space outside, so that was good.
I really do. And I'm not a huge CrossFit person because I get competitive and I feel like I always hurt myself. So this is a great alternative to that. They offer lots of modifications. But it really, truly is for all levels and really inclusive. So if you're looking for a new gym or just want to try something out, go to their website. They have a great social media page, and test it out.
Yep, and they also have all different size weights. So you don't have to feel pressured that you've got to go in with the highest. You can actually start out pretty small, which was good, too.
Or just do body weight. They're really open to any modifications for any age.
Yeah, that top left, that is with resistance bands. Those are really good to build up your strength. I use those actually at home when I'm working out. They're really very helpful. So anyway, it was a nice business visit. Good to see that we actually have people still continuing to, to open businesses in our city. We love that. Okay, any further discussion, any commentary?
Just one quick one, Mayor.
Yes.
Compliments to the members of the public that came in tonight to speak on behalf of the different issues we have. We need that interaction. It's very valuable.
Yes, all right.
Yes, I just wanted to remind everyone that the San Marcos Chamber Farmers Market I just wanted to remind everyone that the San Marcos Chamber Farmer's Market is switching to Fridays as of this week. Super exciting, four to eight PM, and it will be every Friday now instead of Tuesdays.
Yes, that's exciting. I I think it's a much better day for them, too.
I agree.
Start your weekend off right, get your fresh veggies, so you can do your cooking. All right, with that, this meeting is adjourned.